Town council meeting. Just a second, maybe. For Thursday, April 28th, meetings in person can be viewed on local cable channel 1303, or on the internet by accessing townhallstreams.com and selecting Bucksport. Questions or comments may be submitted prior to or during the meeting by emailing estlaside@buxsportmaine.gov, or during the meeting by calling 469-7368. Roll call, Jacob?
Councilor Eastman.
Here.
Councilor Morrison.
Here.
Attorney Mayor Bissinett.
Here.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilor Ormsby.
Here.
Councilor Downs.
Here.
Councilor Rankin.
Here.
We have a presentation tonight swearing in of Officer Benjamin Coco.
Have you raised your right hand? I'm going to say your name. If you have it. I state your name.
I, Benjamin Isaiah Coco.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Maine.
And of the State of Maine.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the Charter and ordinances.
Of the Charter and ordinances.
Of the Town of Bucksport.
Of the Town of Bucksport.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of patrol officer.
Of patrol officer.
Of the Town of Bucksport.
Of the Town of Bucksport.
Congratulations.
We want to welcome Officer Coco to our Public Safety Department, and I'm very pleased to let you all know that Officer Coco is fully trained and academy certified and comes to us very highly recommended, so welcome.
Next is Consider Minutes of previous meetings. We have Town Council Minutes from 4:14:22, and Town Council Budget Minute meetings from 4:21:22. How do the councils like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second?
Any questions? Are those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Item five, correspondence. We have thank yous from Northern Light Health, Eastern Area Agency on the Aging, Life Flight Foundation, Heart Program, Hospice Volunteers of Hancock County. Item six is ordinances to consider. We have none. Seven is discussion item, Services Committee update. Dan?
With the Services Committee update, we move for Joe Davanzo's name for the Economic Development Committee meeting, and we decided to table the Heart and Soul Committee consideration until we get some further information from... Is it Morton?
Morton.
Port Morton.
Thank you. Any questions? Next is a Bucksport Bay Business Coalition request for funding Bay Festival.
Hold on just one second. Terry Doty is... The owner of that business has asked if she can call in for that, so I'm going to call her, so put her on speakerphone so that you can listen to her request.
Hi, Terry. This is Sue at the council meeting. I'm going to put you on speakerphone so you can talk to the council. Okay, hold on.
Hi, Terry.
Hi, how are you?
Good. The floor is yours.
Well, I submitted my budget, the letter, to the council requesting some money to cover the police and fire for the Bay Festival. And it shows on my budget what my expenses are, and what I have brought in as of April 18th, and what I need by the time the festival starts on July 2nd. So with the help of that money, that would help out a bit. I also have extra events going on to help subsidize the money for the event, so hopefully that will bring in more, but I don't know. I'm just hoping, so I am doing extra things to try and bring in some money.
Hey, Terry. We went through quite a discussion in the council on signing for process for nonprofits, and there was quite a discussion on how for-profit organizations were going to be billed and paid accordingly. I don't believe there was any discussion, so you're just asking us to fund this for you?
Yes, to pay the police and the fires, because it is probably the biggest cost of the Bay Festival.
And I see that you've raised $6,700 in sponsorships and $2,300 in ads.
Yes, so the ads that... The businesses bought ads to go on the back of their t-shirts, because the volunteers are going to be wearing throughout the Bay Festival, as well as I have a music banner worth a lot of on that, so that's how I raised that money, and then I did coupon books, and also new memberships. I've included that as well, so everything that I'm bringing in is going to the Bay
Are you making any money off the beer gardens?
No.
There's no cost to the beer gardens?
They have to bring in $1,500. If they do not, then I have to pay.
Have to pay who?
Them. That's their minimum. They want $1,500 to four.
But you have no costs listed.
Right, because if... I don't know if there's going to be a cost or not, because right now they're not charging me anything, so I won't know until the Bay Festival is over. So if I... If they make $1,500 in beer and wine sales, I don't have to pay anything. That's why there's nothing there.
No other questions? Okay, thank you, Terry. We'll take this up.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Bye-bye.
Next item is Richard Campbell, parking discussion on Methodist Church. Dick here?
Sorry.
Sorry.
I'm Dick Campbell, and nice to see you again. May I approach?
Sure.
These are small. Get you a larger one to pass around. We talked some about the church when we last visited, Franklin Street Church, and so as we talked to code enforcement, I mentioned that the only thing you could do in that is have a residence because of the parking, just one parking spot, so...
What... You got to explain to me again what this is about, because I'm...
Franklin Street Church.
Right.
And code enforcement tells us we can only have one residence in that building because we have one parking space off-street.
Okay.
So the thought would be to... Where you own this parcel, I don't have the parcel on it, but across diagonally from Lot 124, you own the end of the church parking lot, which is depressed. It's down almost one full level. The thought would be if you were so inclined to do something or allow something to happen with that building, that you possibly allow a parking deck to be put over that lower parking, and if you look down here on the concept section, the church is to the left, the street levels, both Franklin Street and Central Street, is higher, and if you go at the Franklin Street level and put a parking deck over the property that you own on the end of the other church parking, then you could have 14 spaces on top with setbacks from the property line, and 14 on the bottom, so 28 spaces to support somewhere between 14 and 16 units in the church.
Has this been discussed with you at all, or...
I haven't seen this, but I did... The ordinance does state that you have to have a minimum of one parking space for each dwelling unit, so if you had multiple dwelling units there, you'd have to have room for one parking for each dwelling unit.
So what's the... I'm still trying to figure... What are we trying to gain here? I still don't know. Do you own one of these places? Is that what it is, or...
No, I'm looking to improve the building.
Which building you're talking...
Franklin Street Church, Lot Number 124.
Methodist Church.
Okay, okay, all right.
Peter, I think that was the meeting you missed.
I'm sure it was. That's why I was sitting here offline.
Yep.
And Dick, in your concept, you'd construct this, but would the town be maintaining it going forward, or the building would be maintained?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if you have any interest in either improving the building, and if the building is improved, parking is necessary. Of course, back then, the church parked on the street, but that's not advisable these days. Not good for the town.
Sure.
To answer your question, whatever. We could own it, build it, lease it, improve it, maintain it, of course.
Would access be from Franklin Street or from the... To both levels?
Yes.
Because the lower access that appears would be through the church parking lot.
Yeah, an easement, or they would have to accept the plan of law.
Have you talked to the church?
No, I didn't want to go beyond... You know, if there's no interest in the town, then probably wouldn't.
Sure.
I guess I do... I feel intrigued by it because it's, you know, if we're able to have medium-income housing go in, it's something we've talked about a lot through the last, you know, bunch of years, so it is very... It's interesting to me to see where, you know, what you want to do, and how we're going to do it and set it up, because it has been a goal for us to have more housing.
What is the... I mean, you feel it's salvageable, obviously, the church.
Correct. The units, just to answer that question, the units are mostly one-bedroom. I did have a couple of efficiencies, 400 square feet, but probably would combine those to make them all one-bedrooms, so instead of 16 units, probably 14 units.
Yeah.
I don't know if that answers the question.
So all of these folks would have to cross Franklin Street from the parking lots to get to your property, right?
You'd have to have a curb cut on Franklin to get to that upper level, I would think, but, you know, you'd be coming into that upper level off Franklin Street.
Yeah, I owned one of these in Bangor, off Columbia Street. It was the back of the old Sleepers Building, 150 Main Street.
So are you looking to see if there's interest? It was council's pleasure.
I think it's a... I don't know what it... I'm intrigued. Yeah, I think, at least in talking to the staff, I think there may be some interest in tearing it down if nothing happens soon. You know, I hate tearing anything down. There's still a quarter of a character left, even though there's some trim coming off the front, but in the way it's designed, the penetrations won't change. The window systems will be vertical in the church, just the way that it is, so the egress would be consistent with the facade.
So what would be... So if we said yes, let's keep moving forward with it. What are your next steps?
The next step would be to, well, work something out with the city to find out, you know, what you... What kind of arrangement you'd like. We'd proceed and do our engineering and estimating, and the market plan for the model.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's an interesting... Apparently it was moved there years ago, but lifted for the community space, and there was some concern about the foundation, but we've been in, and, you know, yes, it needs some work, but it's not gone, and the structure is significant. You get up into that belfry, it's really a lot of beams, and there's some grating concern that's coming down and going through the building, and there's not much setback between that and 125, so it would be nice to work 125 into 124 and do the both together.
And with your request, if this would be parking specific to this, it wouldn't be public parking, it would be...
Well, I think in order to satisfy the code, it would have to be for the building own.
And you would... The building would maintain the apartment.
Build it and maintain it.
I think... Did you say there was 14 spaces on top?
Yes.
So the underneath side could still be public parking.
Right.
The upper side would be... Because you need one space per apartment, so if there are 14 apartments, the upper level would be dedicated to that.
Well, I think that would work out in the negotiations. I'd like to have it, so they could have a choice of having something with cover, you
I would suggest that before that we got to engineering, that a discussion with the church, that if they aren't willing to grant an easement or that across that, it can't happen.
If we can jeopardize our access to that by, you know, even if they had come in, if they're not happy with it, that's not going to make it easy to continue that relationship.
But I just say that I know that after the first time you presented, I got a call that said, "Nobody's mentioned this to us," and I said, "I'm sure that we'll, if this is something that grows legs, that that would be the first discussion would be..." Because if you can't access the bottom, then the top won't make any difference, because you can't get there.
Although we just heard that all we need is 14, one per.
As long as whoever is... The question becomes, how do you police that if you've created it? And I say police.
No, I was thinking the same thing, is that how do you plan on... You can have a gate there, I presume, with only people that can park there can get in there, I presume, like a lift gate.
Probably signage or something, gates or...
Well, signage is as good as a sign, but if you're going to do that, I prefer you had a gate there, so tenants can get in and out of that gate, just a lift gate, push the button, and then they don't have to have any issue with it.
Whether it was technically required, at the end of the day, I think that in the long-term relationship, good neighbor policy, it would be a better idea to have that conversation to make sure that they were not feeling like this was an end around that meant that people got access to that pack under there for that purpose, even though they hadn't granted that right. That's just a...
That's the part I'm hearing. I told him that he should come to the council and ask the council if they're feeling, because it's town land that he's wanting to build this on, and I said, "You know, I can't speak to the council, I need to go down," so that's why he's here.
I understand that. We were talking about next steps. That's just a suggestion.
Yeah, because I haven't had a position to go to the church yet, and if it's your property, my access would be at the top.
Yeah, but we wouldn't have a good relationship if we just went forward and said, "Go ahead." Would we need that access? We don't have an easement below. We have an agreement. It's not an easement, so it could be revoked, and then giving you access could negate us getting access.
Well, and I don't necessarily think any of that would happen, as long as there's conversation that involves the property owner whose property will also be impacted, even if this is on public property. The whole review process will allow a butters to say, "Good idea, bad idea," all that kind of stuff, so building relationships works way better. Just, you know, I'm not suggesting you haven't, but now that if the council, the majority is intrigued enough to listen further to this, that I just was suggesting that engineering wouldn't be the first step that maybe would be in your best interest, starting down this path. Just that. Not in... It's nothing negative here, it's just a...
Just a...
Peace in the valley kind of thing.
Yep, just thinking. You know, they have the only access, although I guess, I don't know what the number of the owner is, but he's got access now.
Unpermitted, I would mention.
Yeah, I mean, how would that play into what you're going to build?
But we really wouldn't need that property, and if that's the case, they have the only access, so they would be getting covered parking.
You mean if we lost... I mean, what sort of...
Well, they have the only real access to the ground level.
But it's not legal. There's no David access that...
Dr. York?
Yeah, that wasn't created... That wasn't David access, that's just put that in.
No, no, I'm not talking about this one. I'm talking about the church.
A curational church.
Because in order to get to that lot now, in a vehicle, you have to drive through the church, so if for one reason or another, either we didn't need that underneath, or they didn't give us access, the access comes off public way to the 14 lot, spots above. And whereas your property, we can build on it, as long as we don't...
But this is what we talked about, the neighborly thing, that if we went and did that, we might risk...
Yeah, I'm not saying... I'm not saying that that's what you do, but...
Dr. York would like to be included in any conversation regarding that parking lot. It's his contention that the yellow building, renters in the yellow building are now taking up the lots that were allotted to the town out of that lot. I don't know, the wording in the agreement that we have with the church doesn't really tell us how many lots we have access to, or when we have access to them, or...
In counting, it looks like 12, existing.
What... By what method did you count that you found there were 12?
Painting and the 83 feet from the pin.
The town owns... Does own a section in that corner.
Okay, well, that should be clarified with Dr. York also.
I mean, I think so is right. Talk to the church first, and then we can talk again about it, and have some time to think about it. Maybe Jake could weigh in too.
Straight in the back of the room?
My only input is...
Nobody can hear.
You guys are talking, you got to stand up here, please.
If you're going to permit this, I would be granting him a... Or the company or group granting entrance permit off of Franklin Street. You no longer need to travel across church property to use the upper level. So is that being a bad neighbor? I don't know.
Well, we can find out.
Right, I'm just saying, it didn't seem like everyone was grasping that the way I was hearing it, but... So a new entrance would be granted, is what you were asking for, right?
But it could jeopardize...
Yeah.
The lower, if we don't have...
But by building it, then you'd be offering covered parking to people below, so you could gain or lose.
Which will likely be used by people.
Yeah, it just seems to me... I mean, again, I don't have any philosophical objection here, I just... It seems like there are a lot of what-ifs that could be resolved with several conversations, and those conversations need to take place before we can do anything much else, so that's...
I think the question is, if those what-ifs are covered, like, is this something we're interested in, in seeing it move forward? And I think that's what...
I have no philosophical objection.
We're not interested in additional housing. I think that's a stated goal.
Yep.
I'm definitely...
Yep. Is that the answer for you?
I guess so. Do we need an action?
You can continue on your journey to buy property and engineer stuff.
Okay. No, we're going to talk to the neighbors.
Well, thank you. See, you did listen.
Always listen.
Thank you.
Do you have an idea what economic level these places would be?
No, but from the information that we've gotten from economic development, it appears to be in the market, so we won't know until we put the numbers together, but it seems Not upper end, but right there. And a one-bedroom is a little different, empty nestered. Empty nesters or people coming into town, and you're right in the middle of a lot of economic need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next agenda items, resolve 202245 to approve the addition of Edna Dix-Monten Newburg to the Bucksport Animal Shelter. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Talked about this last time. Any other questions? Any new information, David? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Resolve 202246 to approve sewer commitment for the period of 1122 to 33122. Other councils like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Resolve 202247 to approve the paving road project bid for 2022. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Questions? Got the layout in your packet? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is appoint Joan Davanzo to Economic Development Committee. Based on the recommendation from the Services Committee, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Is that an proposal, Jim?
Yes.
Yep, motion passes. Item 10 is approval of quit claims, discharges, and deeds. Have none. Item 11 is a town manager report.
I have a few things for this evening. I prepared a report for you that's part of my evaluation later on. That's the bigger report, which isn't for right now. That's for later. But a couple of items. I'm requesting a meeting with the Ballfield Committee and the Facilities Committee of the school on May 5th at 5:00. And then a visit to the animal shelter, which we talked about doing when the weather was better, at 6:00 on May 5th. And Tom Crickelair, the planner for Down East Transportation, will be here on May 11th. He's going to ride the bus and then meet with people who are interested in talking about the needs for public transportation and how that works in Bucksport at 11:30 during the lunch hour that's there. So he'll be there from 11:30 to 12:30. Anyone in the public is welcome who wants to have input on this look at our public transportation system. And finally, we opened the bids for the two culverts on Bucks Mills and Jacob Buck Pond. We had two bidders, Wardwell and Thibodeau. Thibodeau's bid was $957,333, and Wardwell's was $828,500. Remember, this project is partially funded by state grant monies. This will be on your next agenda on May 12th for consideration.
On the May 5th, was there budget meetings that night also?
There is a budget meeting.
So that was normally scheduled for 6:00. Were you moving that to 7:00?
I can move that to 7:00. That, this...
So I thought, we talked about doing the visit on the 12th.
Oh, was it the 12th? Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I didn't know if you changed something while talking to David.
No, I wrote the date... Great.
Yep.
So it's the, my apologies.
Yeah, the 12th.
It's the 5th at 5:00 for...
The baseball field.
For a baseball field. It's the 12th at 6:00 for...
5:30. 5:30 for the visit, that way we can go back.
Oh, okay, 5:30.
So on the 5th, we'll have 5:00 baseball, 6:00 budget. On the 12th, we'll have 5:30 visit, 7:00 regular council meeting. I thought you had already talked to somebody, and that's why I was...
No, I was, I had written down 5th, so apparently I wasn't listening.
Thank you. Any questions? I'm not making funny, I showed up here just after 5:30 tonight, so...
So you'd be here at 4:00 next time.
That's right. And we'll just meet out there at the shelter. Is that good, David? Thank you. Next item is approval of licenses and public hearings. We have, first, we have a liquor license renewal for Warren's Waterfront Restaurant. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Here in favor? Next, we'll have a public hearing on Appendix K Yard Sale, Section 13.2.24. Open the public hearing for Appendix K Yard Sale, Section 13.2.24. Any questions? Comments? Everybody saw the changes that I assume we came up with based on all the recommendations we had. Hearing none. Close the public hearing. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
All those in favor? Opposed? Passes. Next in the discussion items on the agenda for the council and the public, can anybody in the public have anything? Richard?
This morning, I received a response from GEI. They're the consultants who done work on the waterfront floors in regards to our erosion and climate change issue with the walkway. Just wanted to let you know that we've made contact. We're good to go. We got the contract with them today to proceed, so we'll continue down that path. Luke also made contact with representatives in regards to Irving as well, and that issue's being addressed at this point also.
Through Irving? Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Everybody from the council? Next is upcoming public hearings, committee assignments, and scheduling committee meetings. I think we just went over those.
We do.
Do we need to reiterate those again?
No, I got it, thank you.
Next item is budget. First is general government.
Give me a minute.
Thank you, Paul, because I, this was all...
Mayor, I was bringing something back. Can we schedule a waterfront committee meeting for the 12th? Someone would like to put a plaque on the waterfront.
12th is going to be tied up, pretty busy. We're going to be...
Do you have the 26th?
Yes, thank you.
Rich, you have to write that down.
Make sure you're in my ear, please, Rich. Yeah, I remember this, he was talking, the last time he was here, I was looking at a different seat.
Okay. General Government is a number of different... A number of different entities. It's administration, it's assessing, it's planning, it's municipal building, it's economic development, it's contingency, public access, and economic development. And economic development, under that, the economic development budget, are, we have a section for the entities that are considered economic development, but they're not, I mean, the towns, the town sponsors, but they're not. And so representatives of those entities that are requesting funding are here speaking during that economic development section as well. So, and the other item we have tonight is capital improvements. Do you want to just stack down the general government and go that was everyone's okay with just going down through those in their normal order they are under that? If so, we'll wait just a minute. General Government covers the front office plus the audit that covers all municipal operations except for sewer, which is separate, our dues to main municipal association, and the legal costs that the town occurs in whatever issues it may be having. You'll notice in the 2021 expenditure line item, a very big number, and that relates to the dangerous buildings process that we went through and what we're still waiting to hear on. But the rest of it, it relates to those costs. The software support line item is the cost of our trio system for our front office operations and the contract that we have with RSU 25 to provide for all of our IT services. That is there. As I said, the wage change is 5%. That's what's in all budgets except public safety. That is negotiated differently through a contract and reflects the current pressure on that whole class of workers and how we can compete for workers. But under administration, that, as I said, is the entire legal cost for the town line item, our main municipal, all the audit, and then the front office operations, are all of our election costs are in this budget, as well as all of the IT costs for the town are also in the administration budget. Does anyone have any questions?
So what's the 200% increase on the, your manager expenses is...
If you remember correctly, I took the $5,000. In my contract, I'm allowed a $5,000 annual professional development, and I removed it from last year's budget. It's in this year's budget. That's what that is.
Any questions? We have to buy new voting booths, I assume?
Say that again?
We have to buy new voting booths?
Yes. We bought six for last year's budget. We have to buy two more because these ones are smaller and I found that we can fit more at the Jewett School than we could with the previous one. Our assessor is not here tonight, not because she didn't want to be, but she, it is her... I want to call her Vidal, but that's the wrong name. Bachelorette Weekend is where Caitlin is, but she will be attending your meeting on May 12th to discuss revenues and items related to assessing. So if there are any questions that I can't answer in regard to this budget, Caitlin will be here on the 12th.
I got, I do have one question.
Sure.
Code enforcement salary, assessive salary, and I see there's a line in there, but when you talked about a 5% raise, those are not...
Other than, in the budget message that I put out, I talked about the fact that there were adjustments for positions that, to make us, that made us competitive and comparable in terms of those. Those are the two other positions that were in order to be... When we're doing our union contracts this year, the goal is for comparability in terms of maintaining personnel. And assessing and code are two other positions that were badly out of line, that are presented to you as what comparable would be for salaries.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, I said no.
The 6,000 contracted services is the ongoing work on the GIS online information that went live this past year. Planning and code is... Includes the planning board secretary, the salaries for the planning board and their expenses, CEO expenses. If you remember, last year, we put in money to assist the code officer with getting all of the documents digitized, scanned in that we have, so that they're more accessible and don't take up as much space with paper. That, this budget continues that this year. And the Hancock County planning dues are in there. We have, they recently lost their, they were out of business for a while, and then they, due to what made it that, actually, and then they've been back in business, and recently they lost their executive director in there, in the process, I believe, of trying to find another one. But the dues are in there for that purpose, but I just mentioned that they're, I'm not sure that they've acquired a new director yet for that.
Questions?
Miss Bill Building, it says custodian salary, but we have a contract with a cleaning company, and that's the cost of that, the cleaning of this building for the year. Repair and maintenance are contracts for elevators and maintenance of elevators and rugs and a number of other issue things that we do. The heating fuel line item is up because the cost of heating fuel is estimated at higher than last year. And electricity as well. that are not regular meetings of the council. And then program supplies, the maintenance and repair, the biggest part of that cost is Town Hall Streams that provides video streaming of all of our meetings and maintains those on a site so that anybody who wants to see them can go to townhallstreams.com and see any meeting that we've had ever since we started, we went with this a number of years ago. But there's a $200 a month fee for that.
And that contingency was the one, the last one?
And contingency is, we basically run budget, and I won't bother to put that up, it's a $12,000 item for whatever comes up that we didn't think about when the year started. It's a very small percentage of contingency considering the size of our budget. Now we'll go to. All right, Rich's budget's sideways. What a nice. I apologize. Anyway, economic development is comprised of salaries, marketing, advertisement, and the outside expenses and outside agencies who fall under economic development who seek funding for the town. There's no major changes in Rich's budget in any line item really, other than there's a higher request under outside agencies than there was last year. But we have four entities, Main Street, Bucksport, Pride, Health Equity Alliance, Wednesdays on Main, and Friends of Fort Knox. And you have representatives here from each one of them. Haven't answered any questions about the other line items, or Rich certainly can, he's right here. But as I said, none of those changed significantly over prior years, and they're all the same basic use as there was. But you could invite the organizations.
Yeah, we'll do like we did last week with our budget meeting. Groups are here, we'll give each group three minutes. We've got your packages, and we've seen all that information, but we will give everybody a three-minute opportunity to talk about their organization or anything else I'd like to say. So I will go down, do you have to call Paula?
Yes, I have to call Paula.
So I will start with Bucksport Pride, Health Equity.
Thank you, and good evening to all of you, Republic that's here. Bucksport Pride is looking for funding for next year, which would be our third installment of Pride Festival in the town of Bucksport. We're excited about what's coming up for this June and appreciate the good support we already received for this year's Pride. The budget that's in front of you is from last year, and then the extrapolated budget for next year. We've asked for $1,500 and feel it would be a good use of town funds to help us plan a very successful and joyful educational celebration in the month of June 2023 to support and affirm and hope that we can add a lot of safety and joy to the lives of not only young people, but all the people representing the LGBTQIA community. Forgot to say plus, LGBTQIA+ community and allies.
Any questions?
I just want to note that the Health Equity Alliance is an organization that the council has funded in prior years, and they did not make a separate request from what they, it appears they did, is identify the purpose of this year's funding to be dedicated to this program. Am I correct, David?
As far as I know.
Yeah, because they did not submit a separate request to us this year, as they have in the past.
They're based in Bangor, but their goal is to provide health equity for the LGBTQIA community region-wide, and obviously, we had to go to an entity that would allow us to get insurance coverage for our activities in Bucksport. So they are our fiscal agent, which is pretty routine for those of us that don't have status as a not-for-profit.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Next is, you calling her now?
I am.
Okay. We'll do Wednesdays on Main. We were trying to get in touch with Paula Key.
Hi, Paula, this is Sue Lassard. I'm going to put you on speakerphone so that you can address the council for your Wednesdays on Main. Okay.
Good evening, Paula.
Good evening, how's everyone?
Good, good. We've got your request, we've got your information packet, and we're giving folks three minutes if they'd like to talk about what their activities are.
Okay, well, as you can tell, we're not doing as many events this year for lots of reasons, and the budget is still the same. Hopefully, we can fill out the schedule and have enough to go forward. And what we have planned already, we have June the 8th for the first town puppet and August the 3rd for Food on Main with the Bessin Hoses Group and the Bessin Club. Everything else is sort of tentative, so it's possible I wouldn't need any money, but if I can work out a couple of other engagements, I will. So that's kind of where I am at the moment, waiting to hear back from people and see what's up.
Great. Any questions? It's snowing up here, Paula, just so you know. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. I hope you'll be very warm.
Thank you.
Bye-bye, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Sue. Good night.
Main Street Bucksport?
Hi, thank you. I'm Mary Powell from Main Street Bucksport. We've been working this year to really grow, to grow our business collaborations, to take, bring, make sure a lot of the new people who come to town start to see Main Street as a place to engage and to grow our infrastructure and bring some, take the money that you generously have provided us and bring more money in for programs, which we've been able to do with $10,000 from the Main Community Foundation to have eating local food events, and we've had $2,000, $2,200 of donations that will be going towards the beautification committee. We have an application for $10,000 from the Canopy, Main Forestry, I guess it's a state agency, I don't know what the, the forestry agency for $10,000 that has a $17,000 contributed match. So that's just a short description of what we're really trying to do to collaborate with the groups that are here and to generate program funds for activities that are going on in the downtown.
And Ron, what you passed out, is Ron still here?
Well, yeah. All I wanted to do, because we, a short time ago, we came and asked for some additional funding because we thought there was a shortage, and we wanted to show you where we'll be at the end of your fiscal year. So that money was important, but I guess what I would add is there's not a lot of excess, but the future shows there seems to be a lot of money out there in general. We had a meeting with a gentleman from DOT. He encouraged, Rich and Caitlin were there, I was there, to try to go forward, and I think Caitlin was going to do this PPI planning grant, which could lead to what's called the VPI, which is, and he suggested the larger one. So it's sort of in the works, and that was as we were looking for other possibilities like the Canopy Grant, he suggested that maybe what you should try to go forward for was this major grant, which is large. So that's some of the things that we're working on.
Any questions? Thank you. Friends of Fort Knox.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Dean Martin, I'm the director of Friends of Fort Knox, and I've been doing this now for three years, one on fourth year. This is a request that we do usually for electric power. This is a continuation of that. It's also dovetailed with a upgrade of LED lighting. I requested that, I think last year I proposed, and I sought it out, but contracts were hard to find. I only have one individual that was researching it, and he quoted $120,000, and the state said absolutely not, we're not going to do that. I'm still looking at retrofitting all of the lighting that what this is, is per agreement that I just renegotiated with the DOT, where they, Friends of Fort Knox for years now, since we've gotten into business with the DOT, for the bridge lighting, for the necklace lights, and also for the facade lighting, but it's mainly the necklace lights, that there is an obligation for Friends of Fort Knox to pay for the month of May, pay for the month of October, and for two weeks in December. I'm not really familiar with how that came about, but that's, and then they pay for the rest. So this helps Friends of Fort Knox offset that as well as the side lighting. And then there's another amount, about $2,000 that I'm looking for, that I did last year. I was 1,500, now the price has gone to 4,000. Price of electricity's gone up, but more importantly, it's about $100 to replace each one of the ballasts and the bulbs of the metal halide lights that are facing the board right now, and there's only about five working, and I've kind of left it like that because they're in the ground, they break the seals, it's a lot of work, a lot of wasted money. Now I'm trying to retrofit them. I've talked to Efficiency Main, thanks to Larry Wall. He said he'd like to check it out, I have a meeting with them next week, and they're going to walk through, and I'm going to see how we can, we've already done the visitor's center with LED light upgrades, and we're going to try to do the side lighting. So that's, so half of this, about half of this proposal was for electric bills as they are, as they've always been, and the other half is approximately for trying to upgrade to LEDs. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? I'm trying to renegotiate that contract.
I know.
Thank you. Alrighty. And as we said last week, we aren't making any final decisions on the budget until we have our final budget meeting, so all requests will look at everything in the budget, and hopefully a final request when the budget is finalized in June. So thank you, everybody. Next is general government, I mean capital.
Capital improvements, and that's sideways. This is what happens when you copy it from where you downloaded it into the, when you scanned it into the system. You download it, save it.
You download it from now. You see the document?
Yeah, it's kind of, no.
Next to the printer, simply up there. And then just bring it up on the bottom left.
See that red bar? Yep.
Ta-da!
New tech guy. Don't go back and do Rich's, or we're all done.
So capital improvements identifies the United Money, they're looking for it in reserve this year, total $350,000, which is about $60,000 more than last year. The item is identified for work this year on the second page, which has been what's been requested by department, which is part of the ongoing CIP for each department. The School Street Firehouse is the old fire building, and they're looking for window siding, sheathing. The Ambulance is looking for a mobile repeater upgrade. Police is cruiser equipment and ballistic vest. The Animal Shelter, which is a new building, which depending on what the cost of that would require voter approval, anything over $300,000 would require a referendum vote, which would mean that if that were to happen, that it would need to go to referendum in November, and Jacob would need this to have been a resolve established for that by August, so that the ballots get printed and all that kind of thing. Highways, a twelve kubrick yard contract, but that's already been approved by you. That's not another one in addition to that, it's the one that's already been approved, but we're not going to likely see until the end of the year. Window and door replacements at the transfer station. Transfer station equipment is an issue to evaluate our trailer and loading system, which is getting older all the time and having more issues than doing what it's supposed to. The town office is a chimney replacement. Anyone who's looked at the one on the roof, it has no cap and it's not in really good shape. It's leaking damage in one side. And then safety improvements to the manager, isn't anything in the office, it's
Alrighty. As we said last week, we aren't making any final decisions on the budget until we have our final budget meeting, so all requests will look at everything in the budget and hopefully a final request when the budget is finalized in June. So, thank everybody, thank you everybody. Next is general government, I mean capital.
Capital improvements. This is what happens when you, you copy it from what you downloaded into the, when you scanned it into the system, you, you download it, save it.
You download it from now, you see the top right?
Yeah, I, it's, I'm, no.
Uh, next to the printer, simply there, hit that. And then just bring it up on the bottom left.
See that red bar?
Yep.
Ta-da.
New tech guy here. Don't go back and do Rich's, I won't.
So capital improvements identifies the United Money and looking for in the reserves this year, about $350,000, which is about $60,000 more than last year. The items identified for work this year are on the second page, which has been what's been requested by department, which is part of the ongoing CIP for each department. The School Street Firehouse is the old fire building and they're looking for windows, siding, sheathing. The ambulance is looking for a mobile repeater upgrade. Police is cruiser equipment and the ballistic vest. The animal shelter, which is a new building, which depending on what the cost of that would require voter approval, anything over $300,000 would require a referendum vote, which would mean that that, if that were to happen, that it would need to go to referendum in November and Jacob would need this to have been a resolve established for that by August, is that, so that the ballots get printed and all that kind of thing. Highways, the Hope Kibber Guard contract, but that's already been approved by you, that's not another one in addition to that, it's the one that's already been approved, but we're not going to likely see until the end of the year. Window and door placements at the transfer station. Transfer station equipment is an issue to evaluate our trailer and loading system, which is getting older all the time and having more issues than doing what it's supposed to. The town office is a chimney replacement, anyone who's looked at the one on the roof, it has no cap and it's not in really good shape, it's leaking down into, in one side. And then safety improvements to the manager, isn't anything in the office, it's so that the manager has an egress other than the door that everybody walks in. We have examples where that wasn't possible and so we have panic buttons, but an alteration that either puts a door at the end of the counter that doesn't allow just direct access or a door out the back of the manager's office, just so that there's a second way out of that. And that was a safety committee recommendation, that wasn't anything I just thought up. I will also note that the, there's not an ambulance on this, but we ordered one, you know, that's already been approved and that is in this upcoming fiscal year when it will arrive. And there are also some requests under the public safety building from some additional items that will come forward, but they're not on here because I hadn't had a discussion with public safety about what all of those items were and so I need some clarification before we put them on the list for this year. And, and so that's the, sort of what the request is for funding and some of, or much of what you see, the other thing that's not on here is the waterfront, the Marina boat replacements that were approved that will be completed in this fiscal year as well.
Speaking of that, the new docks look nice.
Thank you, yes.
I forgot to announce that earlier, but the floats are all in and they do look really good. And what was really wonderful is the fishing dock is always in and we didn't have to mess with where the, the anchors went to where that lower.
Sue, on the manager's office, I thought the door at the end of the counter and the door out the back of the manager's office, I thought that was all one thing.
Well, the, the idea, it, it really only needs one thing, you don't need a second entrance, if, exit, if there, there's, there's not, if there's only people that are allowed to get through the door to, to get in. What occurred before was somebody who just walked by the counter walked into the office and things went south. But the, just a, a door that was either coded for so people go in or you had to be let in, was the idea that it wouldn't be necessary to have both, but if you didn't do that, that there needed to be some, because otherwise there's no way to know who's coming when they step in. And not that I think that I'm predicting any terrible thing here, but the safety's committee's recommendations are based on the what-ifs and we've had some examples of what-if and we've been very fortunate that, you know, I think that happened. But just to make sure that that continues to be the case, either that door there would require someone to be allowed in so everybody would know who was coming, or if somebody just wandered in, that there was a way to wander out with the other door. It's not a very big office, there's, once somebody's in the door, there's almost no way to go unless you go backwards.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Our next item is town manager evaluation, we are going to go into executive session, so if everybody, and we will not be taking any action when we come out of this meeting, so, other than adjournment, so. Thank you all.